With all the base leadership and while we only had maybe 60 or 70 people in attendance, we had well over 2,000 that watched the event over the next couple of nights. So we're expecting hopefully that same type of turnout tonight. The goal tonight is in a series of ongoing town halls throughout the year where we basically bring our partners in the education room in to discuss relevant topics that our parents care about. So in the past with the FNP, a few months ago, we talked exclusively about the public school system and tonight we're talking about virtual online and homeschooling opportunities and ways that we can partner with our friends from downtown. As an interesting fact, for those of you that for the homeschoolers in the room are aware of this, but for those that aren't, homeschooling now accounts for about 5% of the population of the United States of America. About 2 million children across our nation are homeschooling. And in the last 10 years, the percentage of students who are homeschooled is up about 70% within that number. So it is a growing trend, but it's not just for homeschoolers. Some of the initiatives that Dr. Dunsmore is going to talk about tonight are for public school students as well as private school students in its ways to, it's a hybrid model of ways to either accelerate the things your children are involved in or just to provide some alternate opportunities perhaps for courses that are not available during the day in the school system. Before I do that, I'd like to turn the floor briefly over to Major Apricino, who is basically helping me with some of the initiatives we have on the school front. And he's going to also introduce then some of the key players on the base that are helping with education initiatives. So Cap, over to you.
Thanks, sir.
Remember to occasionally look at the...
That's right. On TV. Thank you everyone for coming on here tonight. I just wanted to introduce some of the folks that are really making this happen in the back of the room. Matt Sarnneely from the Med Group. We've got Robbie Monaghan from the Airman Family Support Center. She's a director out there. And then Lee Wright also out there helping us out. And then we have some members, Elizabeth Smothers, that aren't with us. She's not feeling very well tonight, but might be watching online. Really to frame this for everybody here is just like Colonel Sage said, it's not just a homeschooling option. Really what we're looking for is for everyone's feedback. And that goes for all the folks online too. We're just having a discussion with Jamie Livingood off to the side here. She's our military liaison with the school district. There's ways for families just to get some information, get the information out there and where to find the information and what we're actually looking for and what you need as a, with your own special needs. So we may have families coming in from overseas, for example, kids transitioning from middle of the year. So some of these programs that Dr. Dunsmore and his team are going to talk about are going to help those kids either recover some of the credit maybe they've lost or supplement their current education and some of their current programs in. So it's not just a homeschool option. And then what we're looking for is to get some good positive feedback and some of the negative as well, some of the frequently asked questions or some things that aren't so frequently asked that you guys have on your minds. Give us feedback here, log into Facebook Live if you're already logged in and start asking some of those questions. And then our reps here from Public Affairs will be able to write down some of those questions for us and we can actually field them real time. So that's really what we're looking to do. Without further ado, let's use Dr. Dunsmore, our superintendent of Wayne County Public Schools.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. I always tell people it's a fine line between leaving and trading to chase out of town, but you might not want to clap yet. One of the things that we've really been looking at, and I don't know if any of you were here last year when we talked with the homeschool parents and we had several meetings like that, we actually had a rep here from the North Carolina Virtual Public Schools Program. We use that platform in our schools and it was never available to the homeschool population because A, and I'll go back through some of the ways that you take advantage of that and what we're trying to look at and what we're trying to change. Because part of what we know, I'm public, so I'm pro-choice for schools obviously. I'm public schools first because I'm, it's where I work and I'm a product of that. Both my parents are teachers. But we know there's things that we can offer and things that we have to change to keep up with the growing trends because everybody's changing. And if it's homeschool, if it's charter school, if it's parochial school, that's parental choice and we support that. And one of the things that we're working on is I don't want people to leave because they don't think we're doing what we need to do to best for your son or daughter. So those are the types of things we're working on. One of the areas, and as you know, we're building a new Meadow Lane Elementary School over here. We're trying to keep in front of the technology. A lot of those things, and as Bush knows the military, we do not generate funds. So I came out of Pennsylvania and one of the unique things in Pennsylvania, school boards control property taxes. So we generated funds. The school board would set the property tax based on what our budget was. So we had a lot more flexibility in the community to get more involved. Here, all of our capital money is funded through our county commissions. So I go basically with a budget, which is what we're working on right now, and we ask for that money. The lion's share of our budget is the state of North Carolina and then we also get federal monies. And if most of you are watching the paper, good for you. You're looking at a lot of increases. Bad for me, we're looking at a lot of decreases. So the goal of the federal government, which quite frankly, I agree, they want to get out of public education and push it back to the states because the Department of Ed hasn't been there very long. That was added years ago primarily for special education, special needs students. So we get money through IDEA and then we get Title I monies, which is primarily for low income and again, students of need. So that's where those pots of monies come. We have about $160 million budget, so about 70% of that is the state, low 70%. Local money only contributes about 10% because that's primarily our capital money, which is buildings, grounds, maintenance and those types of things. So if you read the paper, we're having a rather large issue with the Meadow Lane project and the United Center they're building. So that's where those monies go because I can't go out and ask for money and solicit people from those. So one of the things we started looking at based on the response that you guys gave us last year was what can you offer us for children that are homeschooling? And we had a really, really good discussion. One of the things that they shared with us, I think that percentages were pretty high, that it was elementary grade kids, and it tapered off as they came up through middle and then high school. And that's pretty much the national averages because as kids get up through middle school and high school, they want to be social beings and they want to be out where their friends are at and participate in sports, extracurricular activities. So we've started looking at some other things other than North Carolina Virtual Public Schools for two reasons. That, and they never had open enrollment. You had to follow the calendar, which wasn't good for you moving in and out. Two, it's expensive and it's probably not the best platform out there. Because any virtual presence you have, the teacher's somewhere else and the technology's new, they'll ask questions from somewhere out there in Cyberland. But that's how the students learn. So there's not that face-to-face or that support or help if they're in the homeschool with mom or dad, whoever's doing that can be with them or a teacher. So we've been really looking at some different things where we would have staff available to help and support that. So Camp Lejeune over Jacksonville has been piloting a program through the Play-Doh and I think Major Cap had looked into some things that we've been looking at. One of the unique things with that platform, they have about 1,800 classes, we would hire the teacher. So my best and brightest teachers, I could hire part-time outside of school time. They could set up office hours even here on the base. And the students or the parents, if you needed help with specific classes, you could have that face-to-face time. So that's part of the curriculum piece of that. And it's not a real expensive platform for us to run. One of the things that I have to tell everybody upfront, to take advantage of any classes I offer, and if you're a homeschooler, you have to sign up for two classes. So you have to enroll in my school. The minimum you have to pay for two classes, you don't have to go to school all day, you have to pay for those two classes. So if they're online, you're a Wayne County Public School person, we're all, I have to, the state of North Carolina says for me to get the funding, I need to pay for that, you have to be enrolled in two classes. So there's what we're piloting. Some of the things, again, as I said, why I talked about from the high school to the middle of the elementary, a lot of the technology in the online coursework, it's only down to about middle grades, middle school. They haven't got it down into the elementary. So the national average, the majority of the homeschool kiddos are in the elementary ages. And as I said, as they go up through. Why that's unique for us, we have a lot of accelerated kids that are graduating early. If they can get their coursework done, that want to get it done and move on. We have a lot of kids that are in community college classes. I should have looked what our percentages are, that graduate with a high school degree and a two-year associate's degree. And that's just not at our school of engineering or the Wayne Community College. We have Eastern Wayne High School. Do you know how many kids we have at Eastern Wayne going out to the community college? And there's 50 couples from Goldsboro. So we load them on a class, they go out there and take classes in the afternoon. So they're dual-enrolled. The neat thing about that, if they're enrolled in that, you can come back a fifth year and your college classes are free and the books are paid for. So I raised three kids and put them through college and I wish I'd have had that then because it's a huge savings and then you can transfer into any four-year school you want. It also gives those kids a year to mature and see if they're ready for college. So we're looking at a variety of things, but what we're finding even with our alternative schools and kids that just don't want to be in the public sector, the one thing it's missing is that support piece. So over in Onslow County, what they started, they're in the second year of this, they rolled it out last year, their numbers have went up by about 80%. So they built a distance learning school and they're starting over the grades backed out. So students can come in there throughout the day, it's staff. If they want to use the computers there, work with the teaching staff and get help and support greater than they can just go home and do what they want. So that's one of the things we're looking in over at Meadow Lane is putting a distance learning lab in there and being able to staff it that way. And as I tell everybody upfront, at the end of the day, it's a budgetary issue for us. Because moving forward through with this, if we don't have the students that are interested in doing that, I can't hire the staff. And sure, most of you guys and Colonel Sage that are here, the federal budget's in a bit of flux right now. The state budget's in a bit of flux right now. The federal government wants everything to go to the state. The state of North Carolina is determining who's running the show between the governor and our state superintendent and the state board. So there's a lot of unknowns of where we're at. Most of you probably have heard about the Common Core. And that's why I say don't shoot the messenger. We didn't have anything to do with that because it caused us a lot of work when they changed that. And now they're talking about changing it back. And so again, for those of us in the field that are here and what we came up through, and I tell a lot of people, the good kids are going to be okay. If they got good parents, good support, family at home, smart kids that are driven and motivated, they're going to be okay. They're going to, I've been around, they're going to learn wherever. The average and the lower average kids that haven't figured it out yet, they may not have matured or whatever, need a lot more support. And one of the things they've taken away from us is the support. So in the state of North Carolina right now, if you've heard, they want to put a class size limit on K-1, 2, and 3. Great, I'm all for it. Think it's a wonderful idea. 17 is the maximum class size. I need to hire 63 teachers and find 63 classrooms between now and August 20th when school opens. We're building a new school at Meadow Lane because I need classroom space. It won't be over for two years. We have about 37 modular classes in our elementary levels already. And we're meeting the 21 class size with that. So if I get down to 17 and somebody moves in mid-year, I gotta find another teacher and another classroom and shift all the numbers around. But I'm not allowed to transport kids between district lines because the state controls our transportation. So we have an issue there. I'm all for class sizes. We're not going to be able to do it overnight. So when you read the paper and they say, well, you're going to get rid of art, music, PE, this, that, the other thing, I'm not going to get rid of them. We can take their classrooms because I'm going to have nowhere else to go. Those are unfunded positions in public education because that's where they've pulled money back out. So we need that classroom space so they'll have to come in and share classes and move around. And we'll have to increase class sizes 4 through 12. So it's a give and a take. They haven't given us a lot of notice. I wish they would work on us that we could have rolled this out a little more because we just can't build classrooms that quick. One of the things we're discussing with our county commissioners and most of our staff here, we're looking at our district's lines and how we can address, I'm in favor of school choice here in Wayne County, should have a school in common. They need to let us control the buses and not do that based on their computer modules of where things are. And that's why you read and hear a lot of problems with the busing. It's just a very antiquated way to do it. But we're hopeful it's going to get more to that level, but we're still working on that. So one of the things that we're excited about the Play-Doh platform, and I've talked to the superintendent over there and Jamie Livingood's counterpart, and if there is a whole big interest from this part, Colonel, they said they would come over, we could do something, we could probably put them on Facebook and know Lejeune and do it that way. But they've had a lot of success and they're expanding that. And they're finding it's good for all their kids. So one of the things that we're, you know, we're interested in your students, we're interested in all students. So it's good for one, it's good for all of them, and that's the different areas we're working on. So that's kind of the long, the short, the summary of it. You can go on, there's a demo on Play-Doh. I'm meeting with them next week. They're going to give me some demonstration codes so if you want to, and I can get them through Jamie that, you know, you can go in and start looking at the various classes that are on there. One of the things they found it was used an awful lot were the math. Because I don't know about a lot of you, if you have high school kids, I didn't like math and I didn't like trying to help my kids and my father-in-law was a math teacher. So some of those higher technical classes that you necessarily would struggle with, they're on there. So when I say we would hire, example, Jamie's my, what do you want to teach Jamie? Trig?
We're talking about math, I love math.
Okay, she's my high school trig teacher at Eastern Wayne High School. Trig teacher, great scores, lighting everything up. And I go to Jamie and say, look, I can pay you an extra X number of dollars a year based on the formula Play-Doh uses. You can't teach kids through the day because you'd be double-dipping and the state would get angry. But from the time you're off work in the evenings, you can have open office hours and you can have up to the X number of kids on the Play-Doh program. So a lot of that, if any of you are familiar with the Blackboard platform, it's an interactive platform. So she'd be able to sign in, see her course list and give assignments and they would just email and do those things back and forth on her time. So a lot of my teachers are underpaid, they're working second jobs, it's a great opportunity because they can do things they want. It helps them continually doing what they're doing and help kids. It's really taken off in Onslow. It's started to get speed everywhere. So we're really leaning that direction of the platform that we're going to use. And one of the things that is, I said it, I'm really anxious to see how it works is most kids, you know, if you get in trouble or even a parent, you hear, well, you don't have textbook to take home to them. Well, if it's an all-online platform, not going to be a textbook. But if you don't have that support person around and tell you, I can't figure out this formula or that formula or this or that or the other thing, who's there to support and help you if you don't know anybody? Yes, ma'am?
Doctor, is there a website or where do you go to see what classes are currently being offered?
It's on, it's Play-Doh.
It's a global student network. It's an overarching website. Play-Doh is one of about eight different modules.
So that's, yeah, the rate of, the Admentum is the company that oversees all that. So they're going to get us a demo. It'll be licensed under my name, but I'm allowed to give everybody that out. So as many, actually for them, the more you went and looked at it, the better it is for me. Because if they see everybody's blowing that up, they know we got a lot of interest here and it forces the cost down.
So there's not a current, there's not current classes going on right now that you can see or see what would be available, but you're trying to see what people are interested in doing under the system?
Yeah, there's a course list on that, what Cap said, and I'll get the, I'll fire you the email address out. I'll send it to you as soon as I can. Any other questions? Yes, sir.
How are we supposed to know or what standard are we held against to know that we're teaching our children the correct curriculum according to the North Carolina standard?
Good question.
Thank you.
I'm not going to defend when, I can't answer that, so I won't. I'm not going to bash them. Where I came out of in Pennsylvania, you would have to bring your son or daughter into the school and be assessed. So there was a variety of those assessments. And I oversaw that in Hershey, Pennsylvania. 99% of the time, we had you keep a book of everything you were doing and there were certain standards and steps that we had laid out for you and you checked off. So then when you come in and did the assessment, a lot of our elementary kids, it was verbal, teacher-student assessments, but we followed that rubric and that curriculum and they were easy-peasy out the door. You checked off and went on. And state law required that. We don't have any such here in North Carolina. So yeah, I feel your pain flying blind on that because if you go somewhere else and it's a different level. So that's one thing that the federal government can kind of help control with, but they haven't gotten really into a lot of that. So if they push us back to the states, that's going to be an interesting policy work for everybody involved. And you know, it's the same way in those that have IEPs with students. IEPs are kind of universal across the United States because of IDEA, the each state has different levels of where that fits in that curriculum. So that is a struggle as we work through a lot of those things.
Dr. Dunsmore?
Yes?
Just wanted to share, the North Carolina standard courses study, 10 of 12 of the standards, it's available on the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction website. So all of the sort of blueprints to take you through the curriculum and what should be taught, but there's not, you wouldn't be able to assess for that. How does it know what you're supposed to teach?
And I think the other important thing to think about is because you put PCS at some point, definitely having work samples, those kinds of things. Because when we receive students who have been homeschooled, whether that may be overseas or wherever, and if they decide to enroll in a public school, then there needs to be something we can go by and see what has been happening with that student where they are. So looking for a national enrollment test or something along those lines that you can access. And there are a lot of homeschool networks that you can work through if you haven't already.
You have to get tested every year when you're 37. And it has to be a standardized test that is across the country. I mean, there's only a few that the North Carolina can accept.
Yeah, the one that we were told to do was to the CAT. This is kind of the, because the homeschool groups...
You can do the CAT.
That's what they said, just do that one. That was the easiest one. But as far as like everyday teaching and syllabus and, today we're talking about Egypt, like what is the, I was just curious what the North Carolina standard is, like in this grade they learn this, block. In eighth grade they learn this, block.
You can follow Mrs. She had on that and I think as Jamie said, my advice to you, just keep a good notebook of everything you're teaching and log that out. One of the things that I really liked about Play-Doh and the issue that I heard last year, people coming in and out and if the coursework didn't align and, again, my staff wasn't the most welcoming on that. If you didn't meet it, tough. So we're changing that. On the Play-Doh platform, I can give you that, you go home and it's going to assess the student, where they're at and where it plugs into our curriculum. So that way we can do that. The other thing it offers is the International Baccalaureate Program, which is an extremely expensive program to run. It's not really universally offered yet, but there's a lot of folks that want that.
Dr. Dunsmore, I know in the past you and I have talked about how this potentially can plug into the, is it the Cambridge Baccalaureate or what's the kind of international?
International Baccalaureate, that's universal.
That's what you were referencing.
International Baccalaureate, IB.
And could you, maybe in a minute or two, explain what that is for those that are familiar?
It pretty much is, most of the American schools, porn and around, had done that to try to get some common measurements between the different countries and what we were doing. But it's never really taken off that much here in the, there's pockets here in the United States. But for those of you who are traveling all over the world and then today's schools and other countries, it's very popular. So you have a lot of your sons and daughter students that are in that and when you come back here, it's not always offered. And you know, where it's really difficult is the high school kids. You get up to a point and you know, you need certain courses and this and that to graduate because they're already looking postgraduate and where they want to go. And you know, it makes it difficult if we're not offering those courses.
And we noticed in Belgium and in Europe, we noticed specifically State Department kids and then DOD kids that are mainly overseas. You know, that's how they basically keep that level of, that standard of education is they can, they only plug into schools that are international baccalaurates.
And you know, and I don't know what the future's going to be, you know, as long as things are government-funded, there's going to be standards and requirements to get that money. Whether they go voucher, if that's going to pay 100%, whether charters or what other schools are going to open up and have that type of competition. Any level you want to compete. But we educate every kid. You walk through my door, we enroll. So one of the things that I've cautioned, particularly if you have IEPs, do your homeworks before you're going to charters. Because I'm held accountable to that and right now they're not. So you know, I'm very passionate about IEPs and special ed kids because that's my background. So that's, we're not afraid of the competition. And as I've told everybody when I've come up here and talked, you know, we need to do a lot of things, a whole lot better. And we haven't done a really good job of sending our message out there and control it. We let the newspapers and the politicians control our message. And they've never stepped foot in our schools. They couldn't, I mean, I have, I'm not going to pick on Ms. DeVoss, but if you heard her initial press conference, you couldn't answer some of the questions you were asking.
What is the process if we wanted to try and participate at a certain level, say, is it open sports? Like are there some schools that allow us to homeschool and allow our kids to enter that middle school and high school level if we want to continue homeschooling but want to participate?
Got to be in two classes.
Two classes, to do any sports?
Sorry, they can be homeschool classes. I think we offer consistent sports across the district. Now into the middle schools, it's, again, it depends on who's signing up. You know, a lot of times football's one of the stuff at the middle school age to get a full team.
Yeah, they have to try out, but they do have the option to at least try out if they're homeschool and they're taking two classes.
They have to be enrolled in our...
And what is the process to do that? Like where, I mean, where if you want...
So if you're in Meadow Lane, you would go over to Meadow Lane and enroll your child.
And they can do two classes at Meadow Lane and then, well, not elementary school, I'm talking more your junior, because oftentimes the sports programs...
Start at middle.
Well, and the community programs start fading off for your, you know, 12, 13, 14 year olds. And so how do you take advantage, what is the process? Have taken advantage of the...
He would, in this case, enroll at Greenwood. Okay, so one of the things we're putting in place with this, if you are a homeschooler like that, you would come in and you would enroll and you're signing up for online classes.
And it would only be online as an option? You couldn't, there's not a way of doing an actual class on site, one or two classes on site? Where they came for two hours in the morning and then you picked them back up?
Well, it would have to be based on the class. It would have to be based on the class.
Class, the class time.
Class times and what's available.
I'm sorry. What do you mean by that?
Well, like in high school, they teach, you know, the course schedules are, you know, depends on what class that you want, you know. I can't say just come two hours in the morning because you might have this Livingood for trig in the morning and you want an English class that's not taught till after lunch.
I didn't even know, realize that was an option because when we were in Germany, the kids, homeschool kids could go to the DOD classes on, well, they were obviously on campus.
See, what we're, you know, as we roll into this, as I shared with Colonel, I need to have an idea of what we need, because I have to support that. Okay, so you know, we're going to have some layers that we have to be involved in and you know, Jamie will be instrumental in keeping track. You know, once you're enrolled with me, you're taking those tests. So there's another area that would be good assessment for you folks because you're going to have a level of North Carolina standard and those tests go the whole way down.
So would it be helpful then that as you roll this out, you know, a couple of months prior or whatever the window is that works for you, we kind of launch an initiative on base, you know, hey, it's the open enrollment period, you know, where we have left and right bounds to sign up. And that way you know what you're going to get from the base and then we...
Yeah, so what they're going to do with us, it's a per-student cost. So within that, you know, we'll do our human capital piece of that and what I need to support based on those numbers of what they look at. And I think it's right now somewhere around 30 kids a class that they support. around 30 kids a class that they support. And that's how we'll do it. So we have to have an idea on the numbers of where it's at. And that's what we're starting with him, we're starting with his initial talks next week of what we're going to need to do now.
But there's not somewhere online to-
I will have for you tomorrow, you can go in and look at. He hasn't given me the, the codes to get into that. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions I have to do to help you start to do that.
Anybody else, anybody have any questions?
I did have a question. Someone told me the other day that the state of North Carolina pays for a free ACT or the one ACT exam. Is that available to a homeschooling family where they could take the test with?
We pay for it for all of our kids. And again, that's probably going to be something for us to do that. And I'll get back, I mean, Tamara, I would almost have to think they'd have to be on our enrollment.
They have to because it's part of our yearly report.
Yeah, that's, and the reason that's paid, so when you see those A through upgrades, which hopefully they're going to change the way they're doing that right now, so that's part of how we're assessed is on ACT. North Carolina chose that over some of the other ones.
Okay, so there's no program or way to request to take a one-state-paid exam?
I will look into that for you, but probably without having you enrolled in my classes, you would have to be an enrolled student in our district in some capacity to make that happen, the standard student classes.
Mamie, do you have a question?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I'm hoping to finish high school over the summer online. Would this program allow me to do that?
How many credits do you need?
I think four or five, not many.
Oh, it's still four or five classes, but yeah. I mean, I, you know, students that accelerate, that are good at that, yeah, absolutely. You know, there's others that don't do well in group environments and in classes and a whole variety of reasons, they need to work at their own pace, you can also slow it down. But one of the things with Play-Doh, when the kids are coming in and may, we can't match the classes, or if you came from somewhere else and you might have been a week ahead or a week behind, it's also a way to keep it consistent and on track.
So if I decided public school is where we wanted to, we wanted to go ahead and do that, because my husband was, he retired now, he taught at ACOG for six years. How could I know that my kids need some IP or something? Would you evaluate them before they sign up?
Yeah, so the evaluation process, it used to be a discrepancy model, and then they still use that as a two-prong, so a school psychologist or you go out and get a private psychologist to do it as long as they have an ed credential, and they would do a variety of tests, and you're basically just getting an IQ. So they use that discrepancy on an average of where you should be at those classes to get a age or grade range. We also use a multi-tiered, what's your MTSS, what are the SSs?
Multi-tiered is just the most of course.
Okay, so what we're trying to do with that is assess the kids in the schools because a lot of times if you're not going to take a test or you miss it here, miss it there, we're not really, it's more individualized, so we usually do both. We have the school psychologists that are out more in the classrooms observing the kids one-on-one. But anytime you're enrolled in public education, if you feel your child has needs, all you have to do is put it in writing, and then we're on a timeline. So you've probably heard that, we have to have you assessed, we have to have the IP, and it's on a timeline. And that's a legally binding document.
Well, if I could just wrap up for a second, so we had a, we had an internet blip a few minutes ago, but right prior to that, where were we up to there, Torch?
500 and 40.
About 540, and then since the blip, we're at 118. So over 600 people have logged in and watched some portion of tonight, which shows us that when we're talking about virtual education, the virtual world is here, and many of our friends are watching this right now on the, on Facebook. I'd also like just to take a minute to thank Dr. Dunstmore and his team. What some of you may not know is that, you know, he showed up here with a passion, it's a passion for all of our kids, and it's exciting to know that he's a friend of, you know, he's a friend of all forms of education. And it's, you know, for those of our, for the kids from this base that go to the public schools, he mentioned it earlier, but he was instrumental along with his team and then the team on this base of helping build a new school right outside our gate. What's the percentage of military kids that go to that school? About 30?
40 or so.
About 40%. So 40% of Meadow Lane right outside the gate are military kids. And with his leadership and the leadership of the county commissioners, they pass, they pushed through the bond, the bond initiative that along with some other things is going to fund, a $29 million bond initiative that's going to fund a new school. So with that, with this new hybrid model, his goal and the goal of the leadership on this base is to support whatever form of education you think is best for your children. So, sir, we thank you for that, we thank you for your continued support and-
I mean, any other questions, if you gather them, if, you know, your team just poured them along to this one.
We definitely will, we definitely will. Any last thoughts? Other than that, how about we just give him a round of thanks?